We'll be done. It's not a fifty seven.
What's about to get, yeah? Want to check tonight here tonight?
Yeah, check, check on that.
Something you write now.
Oh, yeah, no, no, that's okay.
Oh, I am definitely not doing it.
Definitely not doing it. It ain't, it ain't happening.
Microphones are live.
And we're recommended.
Microphones are live.
Thank you. I just don't know yet. Take care. Okay. I sent you an email, but didn't know if it's.
Oh, I had a meeting that ran late today.
It's being proved and then the demo on the back piece. We're waiting to hear from Darryl, the timing. He'll turn down the back end.
No way.
Right.
So, piece by piece, it's like.
Eric, how are you?
Good.
Just in time, buddy. It's in the nick of time.
Hey, we all.
Hey, Mayor. I said he's coming up.
I'll go a stroll.
Yeah, there were some people downstairs, like six or eight waiting, I guess, at the front. Okay.
No, not doing it.
No, I didn't get that. I saw it in yours.
So. The veterans don't like this terminology. Not good. It's not the way we feel.
Chair will call the April fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you'd please call the roll. Will do. Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams. Alderman Fulginsy.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSenzio.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. And Alderman Redpath did say he had a family commitment today, so he had an excused absence. So with that, we're supposed to present a proclamation to Sacred Heart Griffin Boys Basketball Team when they get here. But we'll go to the next item, which is Chief Scarlett. If you'd like to come forward, please.
Well, good evening, council members.
Evening, Chief.
This past Friday, shockwaves were felt through our department and throughout our very own community when it was revealed that one of our very own officers was responsible for despicable and disgusting social media comments. This behavior is in no way indicative of the beliefs of the two hundred-plus officers that serve and protect our community on a daily basis. On notification, the senior staff working with the PBPA Union Board took swift and decisive action by placing Officer Aaron Nichols on unpaid administrative leave, thus removing his authority as a police officer. Again, both the staff and the PBPA are in full agreement that this behavior is volatile, dangerous, and has the propensity to damage relationships, both internally and externally. This morning, I received the resignation of Officer Aaron Nichols, effective immediately. As a result of this resignation, I have proactively contacted the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board to seek decertification, as he should not serve in law enforcement capacity again. The decision to decertify rests solely with Iletzpi. The senior staff continues to have conversations with our trusted community partners, sharing our immediate response to this incident and asking for their continued support. And I look forward to participating in a unity forum hosted by the NAACP and the Jewish Federation, which will be held next Wednesday. So just as important as external conversation, the senior staff continues to address all officers of the agency with the intention of mending any fractured relationships and utilizing this incident as a springboard to constantly strive for mutual respect and understanding. This agency will not stand for complacency. Instead, we will seek improvement, constant improvement, as human beings and as law enforcement officers. Moving forward, the SPD will lean heavily on the assistance of our Diversity Advisory Committee, our ongoing cultural competency training, and continued promotion of the ten shared principles, which represent our mission as community servants. Additionally, and as is available on the Transparency tab of our website, residents of this city, which includes all of our officers, are given every opportunity to report inappropriate conduct, which will be thoroughly investigated. Make no mistake, we are committed to our mission, and we are committed to the equal treatment and respect of all. This is evident by the overwhelming support that's here tonight. We are one team with one mission. We are one team who must love and appreciate the individualism of everyone. Our agency will recover from this deplorable incident, and the staff will ensure that any similar future behavior is dealt with using the same swift action. Finally, I commend the ladies and gentlemen of the Springfield Police Department that are here in attendance tonight, as well as those who have made calls, sent texts, and emails. This support here demonstrates that there is no tolerance for hate in our agency. And with that, I'd be more than willing to take any questions that I can answer.
Any questions? Alderman McMenamin.
Chief Scarlett, thank you for your statement this evening. I think it's well stated and appropriate, and thank you for all your officers and everyone here tonight, because you are standing behind your chief and the statement he just made. And I think it's very appropriate, and we'll move on from here.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. You know, as a, as a, just, just a black, young black man, you know, it was shocking, but, you know, I talked to Chief Scarlett, and we had a good conversation about just, just, just leading and providing an example of how it's supposed to go. And I appreciate the swift action, and, you know, I wouldn't be myself if, if I didn't say that I was happy to hear the, the union and what they put out too. You know, amongst the community, sometimes we, we, we feel like there's a disconnect between the, the administration piece of law enforcement and our union and, and what we think is right and what we think is not. So it really, really did me justice for that, you know, coming a long way in my own personal relationship. And we know this sets us back for a little bit, but, but there's nothing that we, we can't overcome. And, you know, I respect, I want to look at all the fellows, so I respect, and ladies, I respect all of you, and, and our community respects all of you. And we, we just more so don't like guys like that. And every time that, you know, these issues come up and things, you know, I, I, I think some feelings, you know, from the community get tied in, and we get ourselves in some situations because of guys like that and, and, and the examples that not only been set around the country, but now here in Springfield. And, you know, for me, I believe in this police department. I know some good guys, definitely had been to jail, been wrong and not wrong. But, but in my role here, man, I've grown a great, great, great respect. I'll tell you a story, and I told it in the back. My first time, I was scared to death to take a, a ride along because of my own personal fears. But, but I went with Officer, Officer Jones because we were, we were connecting on our most vulnerable people, our homeless people. And when I read, you know, I've been called that name all my life, and so, and some of our brothers is working on that police force. But to see, you know, somebody dump a homeless person carted out and all that, that's, that's, that's the portion that bothered me the most. And, and, you know, I, I just hope that we, we, we continue to grow together and get out in our community, just like we come in here today, and continue to work together and respect each other and, and learn about each other. You know, in that stream, he didn't miss anybody. Black, white, Jewish. He didn't miss anybody. So, so I hope that we all understand that, that hate, it, it encompasses all. It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, they hate all of us. All of us that love each other, hate hates us. So let's keep being, being, being good individuals and loving one another and keep growing together, and that's all we can do. We're gonna move forward from this situation. None of us are happy that it's happened, but we gotta keep being leaders and, and, and be the right way. So I appreciate you, Chief.
Thanks, Alderman. I think it's worth pointing out that it's imperative that we all work together. When I say we all, I mean, the staff and the union, the police department and the community, this agency and the City Council. We have to work together for the betterment of this city. And when you, when you make mention that it tugs at your heartstrings, I've got several representatives here that it, it did the same thing to all of us. And that's why we are here in solidarity to speak out against that. Won't be tolerated.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor, and Chief, thank you. But I'd, I'd actually like to thank all the, the women and men who, who came with you tonight. I know this sort of behavior hits everyone in this community, but our, our, our strong police department, our, our quality officers, who, who don't believe in, in the, the garbage that we all saw. I know that this hits you especially hard. And, and I want you to know, I, I do hope that, that this is investigated, that we, that his arrests are reviewed. Because clearly, there was, as, as Alderman Gregory pointed out, he didn't miss anyone in his hate. And, and I don't know how that prejudice carries on to individual actions. But I know as a force, I have seen a, a police department that is striving to make changes, that's striving to improve. And, and I, I still stand, I, I'm still very proud of our police department. I would, I, I hope that this, this show tonight can also be carried forward so that, that our officers know that, that they are supported if they see something that shouldn't be going on and that they can come and speak. And that overwhelmingly, you, you command a force that, that is, that has quality men and women, and, and their work is difficult and dangerous and appreciated. And, and I, as awful as that stuff was to read, and it's, it's still, I mean, it, it literally just turned my stomach. I do hope that, that the rest of your department knows that, that we do see the good work that you do. And we'll be looking to see that this doesn't end with this resignation. But also that, that the good work that, that your officers do is shared and celebrated too. Thank you very much, Chief. And also, I, and I reached out to you too, but I want to say publicly, thank you for acting so quickly and so decisively. That was, that was critically important. Thank you for that.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to tell you, Chief, thanks for the quick actions that you guys did. And to tell everybody here, it, it really is impressive that you guys are all, all here. One of the best things about our police department, what, what sets it above a lot of other police departments, and I think probably well above everyone, is when we've had, I've been on the council for six or seven years now, it seems like forever, but every time we've had an issue with the police department, we've acted swiftly. And some of you guys may have, you know, you guys, when something's really bad, you turn, turn people in because you know that's not what we want to portray. And that's what makes our department well above everybody else. We, we act swiftly on these, these issues, and we take care of them. And I think that says a lot about every one of you guys out here. But Kenny, great job on getting this, putting, you know, I got a call, I said, it's getting handled. It'll be, be done quick, and it was. And that's the way, you know, on something like this, we needed to have, had it happen. So, good job.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Chief, so you, you've had your first test, I guess, as the police chief. And, and I want to commend you. I, I, I appreciate the timeliness too, because that was what was so important, to make this a success. I mean, living over in Ward Three and the phone ringing, the way it rang when social media did its thing, you know, and it, it started going everywhere. Every group I was in front of, I, I told them, the chief has handled this and done it the right way. That it may not always be the case in some people's mind, but you have done this, and I just hope you keep that standard going. But more important, I hope we find a way, and this is to the media as well, to tell the good stories. Because, because when it happened, what was upsetting to me was, we don't get this coverage on some of the great things that's going on with the police and the community. So we gotta find a, a, a better way to tell the good things too. I mean, okay, you know, bad news sells, but, but good news can do wonders for a community sometimes. And we need to hear more good news, and I already know we're doing good things with the NPOs, with the neighborhood associations. We just need to tell that story more. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, sir, and I, I appreciate the reminder. And I've got two hundred and twenty-five individuals that do great things every single day. And it is imperative that this city is well aware of the great work that they do. So thanks for that reminder. I appreciate that.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to commend you too and echo what my colleague said. But not only did I speak to you right away on Friday when I got ten calls and showed them to you, but also all the men and women of the police department that was out Saturday with me. Every one of them approached me and talked about it, and it was very professional, as well as people that was in the half marathon or supporters that was around. I was just overwhelmed with everyone that was coming and asking. And for our men and women to be very calm and to be professional, I really appreciated that. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that's in this room for showing up, and thank you for definitely handling this so quickly.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Alderwoman DeSenzio.
Again, thank you for your, your swift action and your, your strong statement. It was needed. But I'm gonna veer off course a little bit here. I've been sitting up here for five years now, and almost every disciplinary action that we've heard in executive session that has to do with the Springfield Police Department has a racial element to it. And this is pre you, but it's disturbing, and it, it hurts my heart, and it hurts this community. So I hope that a deep dive really is done, and this investigation continues because this isn't over. And, you know, I commend everyone that came into this room tonight, because it, it's not easy when you're part of an organization who's had something really bad happen. I've been there. I, I get it. I oversee a police force in my, my daily job, so I understand. But we can't have this going forward, and we have to take this seriously. And, you know, like, like everyone else has said, no one, no one was left, you know, untarnished by, by the hateful words of a former officer. And I just think we need to be very in the moment here and do the work that needs to be done to make sure we root out any sort of hate that's in the Springfield Police Department. We can't have it.
Well, I would agree with you a hundred percent, and I think the message here tonight is everyone agrees with you. We don't want that in our department, and we'll continue to strive to get better, as I said. You know, we can't become complacent in, in, you know, how things have done, have been done previously. And I'll say this, as a leader of the organization, there is no pre me. I take full responsibility for everything that has happened in this organization, and that's, that's my job. And you have my assurance that we, as an agency, will constantly strive to get better through training, through engagement, through tough conversations. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, I've had to have, I've had to have some of your officers protect me personally. So I value the work you do, and I value, you know, the danger, the dangerous job you put yourselves in every day. I, I'm the one who advocates for more neighborhood police officers all the time. I, you know, I, we need more of you, because I think you do such a great job and such a good face to be out in the community and see that, you know, see the good things that the police force is doing. So, thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I'll be brief, but I did want to thank you again, like everyone else that's spoken thus far, for the prompt response, the appropriate response. And I do want to thank the men and women of the police department that are here this evening. It shows, it's wonderful to see the support, and I, I think it's clear, we don't need to say this, but I, I indeed will, that everyone up, up in this horseshoe is willing to help any way we can in the future. And appreciate all you've done. Springfield, as well as the country, has been in trying times the last few years, needless to say. And things have been better in Springfield when they've been worse in other places. And we, we appreciate those efforts, but we can always improve and always continue those efforts. So please know you have our support. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Alderman Fulginsy.
Chief, I, I just wanted to say this, it's very brief. You've done no less than what I would have expected you to do. And that's, that's it. That's a compliment to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, with that, you know, when the incident occurred, came in first thing in the morning, and, you know, I had my full faith and confidence in Chief Winslow, as well as Chief Scarlett. And what's really changed in this dynamic, piggybacking on what a lot has been said, but, you know, the union and the administration didn't always get along. And so what it takes sometimes is these difficult challenges of hate that brings us together. And what's important is you acknowledge it, you accept full responsibility, and you reject it. And so by the men and women of the police department showing up, I've said it many times, it's my favorite department. Not only do they risk their lives each and every day for all of us, they put everything aside, put their own public safety at risk to make sure that we do have the society that we all want, which is peaceful, respectful of each and every one. But what shows tonight is how things have changed and how they stayed the same. How they stayed the same is during the pandemic and all the challenges we faced. And people still ask me today, how did Springfield overcome the challenges other cities had faced with terrorizing and tearing up the place and everything else, where we were able to be spared that? And that's because of the level of trust that has been worked on through the years. It's not like a light switch you can turn on, but this is something you have to work on each and every day to earn the respect and reject hate in our community. And the police department with the show of force, with the, everybody from the union on up to the chief, shows that rejection of hate in our community, and that's what it's all about. And that's what we all embrace. And I encourage everybody to come out next Wednesday, I think it's next Wednesday, you said, at Southeast High School for, it's the NAACP, it's the Jewish community, as well as the police department panel, to have these open discussions and learn from this and move on and, you know, build and make our community stronger together. So thank you, Chief, and thank you to all the men and women of the police department for all you do each and every day for all of us.
Well, thank you, and thank you to the council, and I would like to say especially thank you to the men and women back here. All I did was ask them to show up, and, and this is the support. And I think it says a lot about the trust that we are continuing to build upon here within our police agency. So thank you to them as well. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of this city council.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Rob, sorry, all, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
I don't think it is. There it is.
Clerk, on zero nine seven, I'm present.
Noted.
Thank you.
Mayor, you want me to try to get SHG in here while?
Alderman, would you like to vote before you leave?
Thought I did. Did it once. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, they're not, they're not.
Joe. Didn't read, didn't take it.
Sean, you need to vote again. You need to vote again.
I'm sorry? Oh, didn't take it.
I think you voted too early.
Very good. So we have nine voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present, our Alderwoman DeSenzio present only on item twenty twenty-two dash zero nine seven. Thank you. Agenda number twenty twenty-one dash three three seven remain tabled or in committee. Well, at this time, recognize SHG's basketball team.
Do we need a motion to bring them forward before we go to debate?
You need a motion, sir?
Take them out of order.
One forty-four. Go ahead and make a motion, Alderman.
Take a motion that we bring SHG up before the.
Second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Very good.
Walk like you a champ.
Alderman Hanauer, if you'd like to come forward as well? And the reason being, Alderman Hanauer is a, has a son, I believe, at SHG still. But as importantly, he spent a lot of time on, as a trainer. But also, we were nineteen seventy-nine graduates of Griffin High School, and we never thought we'd see this moment in our lives. But really, it's a commendation of the hard work of the coaches and the basketball players, but also, most importantly, the students and how they conduct themselves on the court, also through the pandemic, and what they've been able to achieve through all of that on and off the court. And the proclamation reads, whereas "character, commitment, and heart are words that can be used to define the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Sacred Heart Griffin Boys Basketball Team, and tonight, as a city, we honor their successes and achievements. And whereas Jamarion Bardwell, Javion Bardwell, Jake Hamilton, Will Hamilton, Zach Hawkinson, Richard Jackson, Cal Johnson, Tony Camp- Campaign, Ty Lott, Bryce Musgrave, Keyshawn Singleton, and Mike Utenisky compiled an impressive season of thirty-five wins and three losses to become the fifth team from Springfield in the one hundred and twenty-five-year history of the Illinois High School Association Boys State Basketball Tournament to win the title for the capital city. And whereas these exceptional athletes brought home a series of firsts for SHG, the first IHSA state basketball championship for the Cyclones, the first city tournament title for the school since nineteen seventy-three, a holiday tournament champion for the first time since twenty fourteen, and becoming the Central State Eight Conference Champions for the first time in league history. And whereas through their incredible teamwork and orchestration of plays, SHG went on to achieve a perfect eighteen and oh Central State Eight Conference season, a remarkable twenty-eight-game winning streak, attained a title in the small school division of the Stark Farm, State Farm Classic, and brought home the regional, sectional, and super sectional championship titles for the Cyclones as well. And whereas the wins were not always easy, and this team fought hard in every game, including taking two overtimes to beat Lamphier the third time this season, in the regional final, one overtime to beat Decatur-McArthur the third time this season, in the sectional final, and two more overtime periods to win the Illinois Boys- and two more overtime periods to win the Illinois Boys Basketball Class 3A Championship against Metamora 53 to 50. And whereas we commend Head Coach Tim Allen for leading his team, not only as a coach, but as a mentor, and an appreciation to assistant coaches Tyrell Anderson, Scott Eads, Phil Jones, Corley Lee, Matt McElroy, and Joe Vespa. And whereas we also recognize SACG President Sister Catherine O'Connor, Principal Cara Rapaz, Athletic Director Ken Leonard, and the faculty and staff at the school and for their teaching, instruction, and guidance of these student athletes, and thank the parents and their families for their unconditional love and support of these young men. And whereas we witnessed many of these players' heartbreak during the 2019-2020 season when the IHSA Basketball Tournament was canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic. However, we share with the team the words of the 16th President Abraham Lincoln, "I'll study and get ready, and then the chance will come." Today, we say, "Congratulations, your chance came, and you delivered." Now therefore, I, James O.Langfeld, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, together with the Springfield City Council, do hereby proclaim that Tuesday, April 5th, 2022 shall be SACG Boys Basketball Day in the City of Springfield. We call upon all citizens to recognize the achievements of this team and celebrate the athletes and coaches, their IHSA State Basketball Championship, a first in the city after 39 years. What a great day to be a Cyclone.
He read off most of the accomplishments, so I don't have to read them off. But the, these kids are amazing kids. Like what people don't see, they make my job easy. I'd never check eligibility. I found out that our GPA at the end of the year was 3.44. To go through a season and stringless practices, and we practice every day of the week except Sunday, and for them to come out with 3.44 GPA as a team, like that's, that's amazing. And no behaviors, no... None of those things. So they were champions in the classroom before we ever even got it going on the court. And like he said, it wasn't easy. We had to battle back from a lot of games to show, and that's what champions do. So 99% of our team comes back next year, and hopefully, it won't be as many overtimes. Thank you.
Bob, you want to take pictures? Go squeeze in. You guys know the drill.
You saying all of us?
Better get a pile.
Oh, boy.
All right, let us non, let us non Griffin folks get a picture with them. I know them since they're baby, something like that. Lord. All right.
Are you on your toes?
Sean, so you've got, you've coached some of you guys in there young, well.
Joe.
I got some SACG here.
You got some on, you got big over here.
Yeah. Awesome. That's good.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Next item on the agenda is 2022 dash 076, an ordinance annexing certain described rural property located at 11 Lake Knowles Drive. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting to hold a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to address the council regarding this annexation? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022 dash 076 on final passage.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2022 dash 099, ordinance, or that was a motion to pass 2022 dash 076.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Actually, Mayor, we're voting on the wrong ordinance right now.
Yeah. So you want to do the roll call vote on the...
22-076.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
They have it on there. You can just vote. You vote for the board. Thank you. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Chair, next item on the agenda is 2022 dash 099, ordinance reappointing Roger Holmes as Inspector General for the City of Springfield. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022 dash 099 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2022 dash 100, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Jasmine L. Wolfolk, Wolfolk to the Police Community Review Commission. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022 dash 100 on final passage.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2022 dash 101, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Marcus Lucas to the Police Community Review Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022 dash 101 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is document number 2022 dash 102, an ordinance approving Michael J., or Michael L. Jamison II as Information Systems Division Director. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022 dash 102 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. The Chair will entertain an ominous vote to place ordinances 2022 dash 156 through 2022 dash 163 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion?
Uh, discussion?
Yep. Alderwoman DeSento, and then Alderman Gregory.
I see some duplication here of someone who currently serves on another border commission.
Of which one's that?
That would be 2022-160.
Yeah, that's, we'll bring it up at the meeting.
Okay.
But she's aware of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
I just, just want to make a brief statement on 22-158 and 22-161.
Should we read them in first?
Sure.
Should we read them in, or?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is a discussion on the ominous, and then once I read them in, we'll discuss them then. So all in favor of the ominous?
So moved.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes. Let's see. Agenda first, on first reading, number 2022 dash 156, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Janet S. Williams to provide services as program manager required by a grant from the Corporation for National and Community Services, Americor, for the Youth Initiatives Program Grant Number FCSAY 06273 for an amount not to exceed $26,000 from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022, for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Agenda number 2022 dash 157, an ordinance authorizing execution of subrecipient agreement number 21 dash SR dash 0008 for South Town Construction and Bone Training Center utilizing the city's Community Development Block grant funds in an amount not to exceed $400,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Agenda number 2022 dash 158, an ordinance appointing Brian McFadden to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission. Agenda number 2022 dash 159, an ordinance appointing Terry Sherholtz to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission. Agenda number 2022 dash 160, an ordinance appointing Leslie Scrow to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission. And agenda 2022 dash 161, an ordinance appointing Joe Aleo to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission. Agenda number 2022 dash 162, an ordinance amending Chapter 91, Section 91.01 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to animal disturbance.
Excuse me, is that the one I requested?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So I'm a sponsor on that one.
Yes.
Thank you.
And agenda number 2022 dash 163, an ordinance amending Chapter 80, Section 80.08 ABC, and Section 82.02 A1 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to pedestrians on roadway. Chair will entertain, I guess, a motion to approve those for consent, or I'm sorry, for committee dis, consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved into second discussion. Alderman Gregory?
My only comment is on 22-158, 22-162. I just, I just think that, or 161, I just think that these, we have an opportunity to get more citizens from our community to serve on our economic development board than these two individuals. Aside from all we have to go through to get anything done, I think we have some people in this city, people of color, anybody, but these two individuals on our, on our economic development board. Thank you.
Alderman McBenimah.
Mr. Mayor, this may seem like an unusual comment, but I'd just like to commend all of those that work on these ordinances to put them together. Why? Because I think for my 12 years on the council, this is the most number of ordinances we've placed on first reading at any single council meeting. We started out with 49 before we got here, 49 ordinances, and we've just added another eight. And so that adds up to 49 and eight would be 57 ordinances. So, you know, it takes a lot of work at the legal staff and all the departments to put all these together. And so the, the, there's a lot of unsung heroes out there, so I think this work reflects that.
Thank you. Alderwoman Conley, did you, or no?
I, I have my Xbox.
Very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the City Council? One thing I will state is the SHATIF, we did receive all the letters. Thanks to a lot of effort by Alderman Gregory and Alderman Williams in getting the final three. So we appreciate the county, the Santeria District, and Capitol Township providing those. And so it's my understanding that'll go before the legislature this week, hopefully with approval with the Senate for another 12 years. So I think that'll take it to 2034. Is that correct, council? Any new business come before the council? Alderman Donlin.
Mayor, it's, I guess it's new business. I appreciate the recognition here. I just want to thank everybody that, first of all, I want to start out with the staff that, and the engineers that, and your office, Mayor, and you, that coordinated the public house yesterday evening for the Cokie Mill Project. We had over 120 members of the public show up. Alderwoman Conley was there, the mayor was there. And it was just good to see and have that input. And I think it just shows that the process works and people care about their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Great. Alderman McBenimah?
Mr. Mayor, you've been working hard to obtain funding for the Y block, and I believe there may have been some committee hearings in the budgeting process at the General Assembly this week. Do you have anything to report on how that might stand?
Yeah, the original committee was canceled, but they're still efforting the appropriation. And I know Representative Shear and Senator Turner have been moving that, especially on the House side with Representative Shear, she was instrumental in the SHATIF. It's just not the Y block funding, but we are also efforting for the Medical District. We've never been funded, and so we're trying to get funded through the state, as they do with Chicago, as well as the Teen Empowerment Zone, which is Comer Cox, Chamberlain Park area, trying to secure funds there as well.
Absolutely. And, Mr. Mayor, I understand that as part of the Y block and the Medical District effort to get a comprehensive plan for those two areas that are close together in location, that the county and the Alliance for Progress and the city, and I believe there's another group, the Lincoln Charitable Foundation is putting money towards that, and that the interviews went out in the last week to decide who will lead that effort. So that's a really positive step for downtown planning. And all those that have worked on that deserve credit.
Yeah, I know DSI's been at it for a long time, so it's good. Everybody came together to provide those financial resources. And I know Donna Devlandis, grant writer or coordinator, she's going to write another grant through the state of Illinois to help fund part of that study, which would encompass the Medical District and downtown as well, like you pointed out.
And thank you for mentioning downtown Springfield, Inc.
Any other new business? Oh, sorry. I gotta remember to do this. Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo Alderman Donlin's comments and appreciate the hard work of the staff, CMT Engineering, and all the residents of Wards 8 and 9 who came out last night. It was a very packed house. One, one person did make a comment to me. They were, they were filling out their, the comment forms that were included, and I think there was maybe some skepticism about whether or not those comments would actually be read. And, you know, I reassured them, and I want to say again, those, they're all read. All of those comments will be read. I need to remember to ask Director Bottom to scan me copies of those so I can see what people had to say, too. But, yeah, it was a lot of conversation about some very big changes coming to, to the Cokie Mill area. And, and in that regard, oh, and here's the director. I also want to add, we have, I believe, can we announce we have another meeting scheduled for the 13th of April for activity that impacts Wards 8 and 9? That will be a conversation and a meeting with Public Works and the Fire Department over the relocation of Station 8. I have some sharp-eyed constituents who pointed out to me or asked about the zoning for the property on Rickard Road and Rickard and Lawrence that's, I think, for the Regional Planning Commission right now. So I have, I told them to please come to this meeting when we get it scheduled, and we'll get that event posted and shared. But again, thank you. I know that was a lot of, a lot of time and effort, and everyone stayed till the very end, so thank you for that, Director. And if I could get scanned copies of those written comments, I'd appreciate it.
We can do that, and they definitely will all be read. We consider those and put those in the project development report when, when doing the documentation, and that was amazing turnout for that meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Yeah, there's over 100 individuals, I think.
Over 120 individuals.
That's good.
Yeah.
And what's the average usually?
A lot of times it's around 40, 30 to 40.
Very good.
For that type of a project. Thanks.
And as I see the Chief Blau is snuck in the back door there, I have a feeling there will be just as much, much interest in your presentation on the new fire station. Wear comfortable shoes.
Yeah, that's, again, that's Wednesday, April 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at LRS.
Thank you.
That's the Station 8 relocation, open house. And there'll be a presentation at 5:30 with the presentation and questions. Probably go from 5:30 to 6:30, so we'll have a half hour to review the display boards beforehand, before the presentation, about a half hour after the Q and As, well.
Thank you very much for setting this up, Mayor. And Julia, I don't know if she's in here.
So, let's see. Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two, two quick things. One's old business, one to be a new. Previously, early time in my, my, you know, we had to have some people that I was going to speak on large items. But, Mr. Zerk, I passed the ordinance, we passed the ordinance here. It was a dump receipt ticket. And, and the original way that I wanted it to work or written up was that when we went and find... went and find or sent a letter to anybody who needed a remedy, some large bulky items from their property, that we made them show a dump receipt before we cleared the violation. The reason why I, I thought that would work well is because when we go flag somebody for five couches on their property, where they gonna take them? If they send us a, you know, send us the picture an hour later or whatever, where have they taken? I can tell you, they're going in our alleys, they're going in vacant lots and things. So, you know, if we could please review that and we could please get with our Public Works so we can get that rolling, I think it will help us slow this down. You know, because it's a never-ending battle, and it's getting worse and worse, and we gotta put, you know, start trying to, try to really, really find some unique ways to slow this thing down. Please, thank you. My second would be new business, and, and it's on our ordinance that's coming up, it's on first reading, but, but I must say it now because it won't set right with me up. But one ordinance, we have one for our downtown celebration, J C Celebration for forty thousand dollars, and then we have another one for Juneteenth, right, for twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, I work two pens on, on this, this thing. One's for Springfield sixty percent, the other one's the Abraham Lincoln visitor. I'm all about visitors, I love it. But, you know, and we, we had a conversation with the Juneteenth Committee, you know, and I'm begging for twenty-five stinking dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars. And here we got an ordinance for forty thousand dollars for, for something else. So what I'm trying to get to is when the community says, hey, we're, you know, things go differently other where, these are the type of reasons why. I'm not saying that we do it on purpose or nothing, it's, it's just really how things go. So, so with that said, Mr. Zerkel, with this ordinance, can you prepare me an amendment for a three-year agreement for twenty-five thousand dollars to Juneteenth, please? I know you don't like it, I know you looked back there, that's fine, but please draw that up, because I think it's appropriate. When, when we talked before about when Juneteenth was a holiday, it stepped beyond the normal community celebration. It stepped into just as, just as important as July Fourth. In fact, we can't even really celebrate July Fourth in my eyes without, without recognizing what Juneteenth does for this country. In the home of Abe Lincoln, he's only known for freeing the slaves, for real. So that's, that's just what I would like, and thank you, I appreciate it. I've been holding that since last week. Thank you.
Alderman DeHanauer.
Yeah, thank you. Real quick, we also on, you know, this all started when I, when we had a golf tournament that we tried to get seed money and, and to get them started. And then it all's blown up to, to more money, more money, more money. We set a rule here that every group that we give money to, we need a report. We haven't gotten reports from anyone. I think the golf tournament did it one year. I stopped asking for money from the golf tournament because they got some bigger sponsorships. I didn't want to spend the money, I didn't want to spend taxpayers' money. But we deserve, the taxpayers deserve to see what, what all this is being used for. And I'm not, it's not just Juneteenth, it's everything. Because, and, you know, maybe we need to really look at capping some of this stuff. Because that's just, you know, that's number one. Number two, and if you let me finish, Scott, and then I do want to take a cha- a little bit of a timeout to recognize the I T department. We got, we made it through our first real meeting with, with the new system, and I know Pat Suba, he's worked very hard on it. This is very hard, this is not easy to, to, to do, especially with, with us up here. And, and I just want to congratulate them and thank them for all the, all the hard work. And they're probably, they're, they're probably ready to get out of here.
I don't know.
Go drink somewhere after putting up with this, so, but thank you.
I want to correct you, Alderman, you're not hard to work with, though.
Give him time.
Scott. Thanks.
Yeah, sure enough. Actually, Juneteenth last year did provide reports, so did the Mother Road Fest. We've had a couple of written reports that have been provided, so, but if you're looking for an in-person presentation, we can certainly do that as well.
That's what we were, that's what we were supposed to have.
A written report.
Was it written?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was written.
There was written. Juneteenth did one last year, they did a written report instead. It was emailed out, and the ordinance actually specifies that it just has to be written and not in person.
What about some of the others, though? What, what about some of the others that we've given money to?
Well, it's been a couple of years, so that we've provided the local tourism grants, but before that, I believe that the Horseshoe Festival did, the purchase they received, they received some fifteen hundred dollars. So there have been written reports, certainly in person, if you'd like to be here within sixty days after the event, in person, absolutely. And the Springfield J C's Capital City Celebration, they're going to provide a presentation next week, and then Juneteenth will provide a presentation on April the nineteenth as well. So ahead of the ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, what we can do is send out the written reports unless they're over, say, twenty-five thousand dollars and above, and then they will ask them to come in person, then at the end of the year, we'll do a recap of all of them, that's right with everybody. So anything twenty-five thousand and above, and then if you want a, want them, the ones below it to come in for a presentation, we can do that, unless you want all of them to come in.
I just, I wasn't sure what the rule was, mayor. I just, I just noticed we hadn't really, you know, been, and I, I realize COVID and everything, but I think we ought to get back to that.
Okay. And let's see, Alderwoman DeSenzo, and then Alderwoman Conley.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I want to take a second to thank Sangamon County Department of Public Health Director Gail O'Neill. She asked me to directly contact her regarding any animal complaints I get. I get a lot of animal complaints, and she's now getting every single one of them. So, you know, I wanted to just thank her for offering that to me, and now she can see the kind of complaints I get, whether it's barking dogs, which isn't an ordinance that's going, that we're going to be discussing next week, or whether it's dogs wandering into people's yards, people feeling unsafe, neglected animals. I get a lot of these calls, and that's just in Ward Six. So she is now receiving that same information that I receive, and I just thank her for putting herself out there for these calls and these emails.
Great. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. I actually just kind of wanted to add a little bit onto Alderman Hanauer. Maybe if it would be possible, if we could have somewhere on the city's website, just a repository, the reports from these activities that we've had, kind of as an oversight, but also it's, it's a way to help promote the event from previous years to, to next, you know, future projects. And that way, it's not just us getting emailed copies, but it's also just on our website. And like I said, this should be an opportunity for us to promote the events too, so if we could have that added, maybe on, on.
Very good.
Director Doll's page. Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to say thank you to Public Works, Director Bottom, and thank you to, I have my neighborhood president here from Lincoln Park. There was a lot of our neighborhood neighbors that came out to cheer on all of the marathon runners, and, oh my gosh, they were tired when they came through, but I was just saying, come on, come on, get through the finish line. And our police department was out there also helping, so it was very organized, a lot of support, and I look forward to seeing them next year, but great job to all the runners. You were extraordinary people and amazing people to get through that finish line.
Very good. Clerk Lesko, and then Alderman Gregory.
Yeah, I just wanted to, also, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thanks to the I T department and all their hard work that they worked with staff from the clerk's office and put this together, and it's just amazing process, a lot, a lot of hours went into it. And congratulations on the first night, and it went well. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, Public Works, if we have somebody with a basketball hoop, a kid, call me. Call me, call me, call me about it, and I'll handle it. We shouldn't be fining people for, for basketball hoops. I just got the email, I just looked at it. It's not in the right way. Jesus, all the stuff we got in Ward Two to clean up, just call me, I'll go talk to the kids about the stinking basketball hoop. This is ridiculous.
Any other new business?
Looks like Director Bottom wanted to come up.
Do you want to address that now, Director, or later?
We obviously want the kids to play, play outside as much as possible, and we don't want to necessarily get into it. However, it is complaint-driven when we do take a look at basketball hoops. We do try to reach out to them numerous times prior to taking it down, giving, giving them a couple different notifications and then posting it on the doorway before we do it.
Just call them. Just call me. Call them. Don't find no kids for no basketball hoops. We got kids dying on the streets and everything else. It's not even on the basketball hoop, it's on our yard and it's hanging over the sidewalk. Big freaking deal. Like, come on, man, we, I, I'm just saying, I'm not harping at you or Daryl, but I could go right through my neighborhood, we got a thousand other better things to be doing. That's all I'm saying. You know, and, and the guy who did it is not one of our normal inspectors that I see on the papers all the time, but basketball hoops barely in the street, all that stuff, that's not our concerns. Just, just call me, I, I will go to the house, because it can be that many. That's, that's ridiculous. Once we clean our community up and got it looking good, we can go around and find people like we do on the West Side about basketball hoops being in, in the cul-de-sac, but not over, not, not, not right now. That's just what I'm asking. That's all I'm asking for Ward Two.
Yep, we'll give you a call then, and then go over there and rectify it, or see what the situation is.
Yes, please.
The only other announcement, just reiterate, Wednesday, additionally, Wednesday, outside the Station Eight relocation, is the N double A C P Jewish Community and the Springfield Police Department panel discussion from six to eight at Southeast High School. And we do have several people signed up to speak. First is Jamie Adair regarding bulky items.
Again, my name is Jamie Adair, and my address is at twenty-one thirteen South Fourteenth Street and in Ward Two. And I'm going to read this if you would just let me do that. And also, I represent Icon, Icon tonight, and this is about bulky items. Icon continues its education and awareness of key factors and for healthy neighborhoods for all. Icon, most recently, focused, our focus has been on large and discarded items lining our neighborhoods. Colleen Stone with Habitat presented the large item pickup to our, our membership. In turn, we were, we are here to share this with you tonight. Issues are lack of citizen knowledge of the process to request service. Capitol Township has forty-five thousand residents, but only five, five thousand have use of this service. Disregard for, for obligation to be a good neighbor. If, if the item is reported via complaint, it may take up to twenty-eight days for remediation by the city requesting pickup by Habitat. Confusion between Springfield address and this Capitol Township benefit, and then complaint fatigue is also a factor. Neighbors who have just given up when there is no change that they see. Welcome additions, new awareness, education. Both city and Habitat have educational materials. The city increase regular communication about the service, make educational material available in printed and electronic formats for ease of sharing. City Council share during citizen and neighborhood interactions. Have a supply of flyers and materials available. Neighborhood associations, the activities they, or actively share the information, they plan neighborhood cleanups and set dates, set up dates, wait a minute here, set up, set up dates and agreements with the city for drop-off. Harvard Park and Enos Park Neighborhood Associations do this now. Citizens, they see it and they call and set a shut, they call and set, see if it's been scheduled for pickup, and if not, they file a complaint. And in the county, the county implements wide, or countywide pickup, and they are currently working on that now. Large item pickup and program design, citizens in Capitol Township may, may schedule a service with Habitat for Humanity at a contracted, which is contracted by the city for this service. The address may have up to two services for a total of six items annually. A service could be in combination as a pickup or a drop-off. Now, the service can be scheduled online, by email, or by phone. Pickups are zip code-centric, Monday through Friday, six P M, pardon me, six A M to six thirty, or to two thirty P M. Once scheduled contractually, the item must be, must be picked up within fourteen days. The items should be set out for pickup no later, no earlier, pardon me, than one day in advance of the pickup and placed on a curb. Alternate arrangements other than the curb may be arranged for alleyways and apartments. Services are tracked by address. Waste haulers report the city, report to the city items considered large, which the waste hauler will not take. Now, frequently asked questions, if an address has two services and therefore denied, an approval by a new tenant can be requested through Public Works Waste Division. If a citizen can provide proof they are a new resident and they are not, and they are not allowed, they are not involved in the previous two services this year, in that year. Neighborhood and homeowner associations can establish agreements with the city to contact, to connect and drop off at Habitat by appointment only, and generally, this is part of a neighborhood cleanup. If the city inspector designates the item as fly dumping, the service is not counted as a service for that address. Neighbors can call Habitat to see if an item in their neighborhood is scheduled for pickup or wait the fourteen days to see if, if the item has been picked up. If not, the citizen can file a complaint with Public Works. If there is a complaint filed by, filed by the citizen or by an alderperson, an inspector is assigned, the inspector is assigned and the, and to validate the complaint. The property owner is notified with a seven-day window to address it. If not addressed, the compliance, a compliance process is initiated. Habitat maintains a formal database for regular reporting back to the city. If the city requests a pickup, Habitat will let Public Works know if the pickup is already scheduled. No soft items, electronics, or hazardous material. Habitat will pick up furniture, appliances, mattresses, household items. Anything in good condition is sold. Anything metal, like non-working appliances, is recycled. Electronics can be dropped off at B L H Computers. Hazardous material recycling is scheduled by the Illinois Department of Public, Public Health periodically, and soft goods like clothing can be donated to charities locally. Also, if Springfield, if Springfield.
Wrap it up. Is this the flyer? Is this the flyer you're reading?
Yeah.
That you distributed?
Yeah, that's part of the flyer.
We got an email. We got an email.
Or on the city's website or your website, if you want to provide that.
Okay.
Then we can just direct people to it.
Okay. One more thing, if I can.
Okay.
If Springfield, especially in our older neighborhoods, is to be a healthy, safe, attractive, appealing city for keeping our people here as well as our visitors and future investors, discarded and abandoned ugly bulky items must be subject to removal system that ensures that such items do not linger in our streets, alleyways, yards, and parking lots for anywhere, or anywhere else that bulky items are routinely and illegally dumped. Complaint, complaint fatigue is real. Recently, recently, when documenting items along an alleyway in the east side wards of Springfield, a neighborhood police officer stated that the neighborhood accepts these conditions. Icon believes that this is not true. Icon believes that no one would accept these conditions unless they are conditioned to do so. Leadership is needed. Change is needed. Not a one-time periodic, not a one-time or a periodic pickup. We are asking for you all to develop a comprehensive, proactive, bulky items program modeled after the success of the yard waste program. Make it simple, predictable, and often. Formally set a timeline for stake. set a timeline for stakeholders to complete a comprehensive review of waste challenges throughout the city and find new approaches. Icon is ready to assist. Icon is always interested in what the city's administration and council intends to do about making Springfield a city they are proud to serve and work very hard every day to improve. Icon believes always that you should not have to move to live in a better neighborhood. And I thank you very much for the privilege of your time and allow me to speak to you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Jane McBride.
Mayor, I had a comment.
Sorry, Alderman Purchase.
I forgot to press request to speak. I do understand where Mr. Jamie is coming from. I know that Director Bottom Communication has been excellent with me over the past few weeks. I drove around Ward 5 with Bill and there is just like, it's ridiculous. People, couches, TVs, one house I saw six TVs and three couches sitting in the front yard. And it was just unbelievable to go through these areas and see this. So I am in support of looking at the comprehensive system, but I will commend Public Works because every time I get a complaint or a concern, they do put a ticket in right away. So I think it will help when you get the system going for people to see what, where they are on that list to get their fly dumping picked up. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, but also we do need to look at what they're saying.
Yeah, it's a work in progress, but as you drive around, you should write down the addresses and call Habitat or call Public Works and give them the addresses and then we'll have them picked up. So we've communicated that with the waste haulers, the same thing because, you know, a lot of eyes on the properties, you know, you can sit and wait for weeks on end or days on end and the best thing to do is report it and then we can act on it. And I think Director Bottom, I know with City Works, report a problem. That's one of the things we've covered is expediting those type of processes.
Mayor, I do want to follow back up with what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, but there was a particular house where trees was growing through a boat and it was sitting in the back of their garage. I know that we have inspectors that drive around to look for these items like Alderman Gregory said, where's...
Basketball hoops.
Yeah. So I'm just saying that maybe we need to look at what they go out and do every day as well too, to see some of these items. I have Enos Park that is saying they are continuously getting rolled up in violations, but when I drive around and I see some of these items, why aren't we looking at that stuff?
Alls I'm saying is, you see something, say something.
Trust me, I will.
Nate?
Yeah, let us know. And obviously, as anybody knows, aldermen, the citizens, if they submit it to our office, we put it in right away and we follow up consistently. In regards to the lack of citizens' knowledge, we do have our Wasting and Recycling webpage, www.springfield-il.us/recycling. We do provide a lot of handouts. We send out the magnets and hand those out. That has that information in regards to the website, the various programs. Just so it's right there on people's refrigerators so they can see that. Julie does a great job with social media, the city's Facebook page, and the weekly neighborhood news updates. And thank you too for giving her more of a budget so that she can market these things as well. In regards to only 5,000 using the service from 2017 to 2021, in five years, we've had over 26,000 residential pickups, equalling over 5,000 pickups a year, and the program does continue to grow. So I think we are doing a good job. There's always room for improvement, which we always strive to do. So, and I'll tell you, I've not necessarily used it. I know about the program, but I've not necessarily used it. So I think a lot more people do know about the program as well. They don't necessarily have to use it though too. In regards to how fast we get to it, it could potentially take 28 days, but generally speaking, we have it picked up within a week. And then we'll continuously try to improve operations with Habitat. If they're within that area, they can pick it up, whereas we can track it in City Works and we can pick it up quicker. So we'll look at that, see if we can improve operations. And then in regards to confusion between the city and Capitol Township, we do have our map on the website too, where you can see where the corporate limits are. So we'll continue to do our best in order to improve operations and we'll always try to continuously improve operations if anybody has any advice.
And thank you, Director Bottom, for getting out so quickly before the marathon to get those areas cleaned up where we had people running down those roads.
You're welcome. Alderman DeSantis.
Thank you. I understand what Icon is saying. I mean, I could spend all day long calling in properties that people are complaining about. It's ridiculous. It's a waste of our time. It's a waste of your time. And, you know, we would love to, you know, find a better system, of course, but the people that are having these issues are people who really can't afford to be fined for this. So we've got to find a way to declutter and de-junk our city. It's atrocious. I mean, it's appalling to drive through some areas of town. And for those of you that don't have this in your wards, you know, I'm envious because this is a daily problem in Ward 6. And it's shocking what people dump. And it's shocking how, you know, it's not your fault, Director, and it's not, you know, there has to be a better solution than what we're doing because what we're doing right now is not working.
We're working harder instead of smarter.
Yep.
Alderman Henner.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I can tell you, we do have some of it out in Ward 10. I've got a neighborhood that we constantly, I drive through and I see it. You know, I think that it'd be interesting to find out if, Nate, if a lot of these are rental homes that it's happening at. I think in the neighborhood that I'm dealing with, a lot of them are. And I think you have to find, you have to find them. You know, yeah, we can make this better. It's just going to cost a lot more money. And, you know, we got one group that does it and that's, you know, are they capable of adding more people? You know, I mean, we can fix a lot of problems. It's just going to cost a lot more money. So what do you want to take money from to offset this? And I guess that's, it's about priorities and that's what we set up here. So if this is more, a bigger priority than something else, then that's something we have to address at budget time. But, I mean, we spend, I remember when we brought this forward, it was a pretty good chunk of change. And then we added that, you know, we had to get additional leaf, you know, yard waste pickup and then additional limb pickup. We've gone from two to four. So that's doubled. And, you know, we can do whatever we want, but what's going to happen on years where it's lean? And we can't do it. I mean, that's the way it works.
And in order for us to pick up more solid waste, we've, generally, the solid waste crew has been utilized to pick up branches. However, they are solely designated to solid waste now. So we let them, we have them focus on solid waste as much as possible too versus pulling them up on the branch pickup.
Very good. Thank you.
One more, Mayor. Alderman McEmma.
Yeah. I agree. This is a serious problem in some of the neighborhoods. I drove around Pillsbury, I guess it was yesterday, I guess it was, just atrocious conditions.
Yes.
And I'd be in favor, Director, of increasing your budget. I know where we can get it from. We could do two firehouses instead of three. That frees up $3 million for some of our most needed activities in our city. In the neighborhoods that are basically, I hope this doesn't offend anybody, you know, they're slum conditions. I think Pillsbury neighborhood, when they did a mass cleanup, how many dump trucks were filled by Public Works? I think it was 15? 23, thank you. 23 trucks in one day, in one neighborhood. And we got other neighborhoods like that. So I'm in favor. I'll vote it. Put in ordinance, more inspectors, more crews to clean up our neighborhoods and set an example. You got my vote.
I'm with you.
But we'll have to take something like Alderman Henner said. We got to take it away from somewhere else.
Not the firehouses. Well, which firehouse?
That's why I voted for only two firehouses, because we have other important needs in this city.
Thank you, sir.
Amen.
Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Very good. Thank you. Next is Jane McBride.
Thank you. Let's turn to another happy topic of animal control. I appreciate the time. I'm here. My name is Jane McBride, 3304 size with Illinois Humane, as is up on the board. I'm here because I want to, as you are, where you have a contract with the county for animal control. You are 75% of the service area. Alderman Gregory, we had that question come up as to like, what do you expect us to do? Well, you're 75% of the service area. You've got a contract with them. Why I'm here tonight is because we've had a number of developments with them that I think you need to be paying attention to. And I would also like to ask, I haven't asked specifically, that you set up a task force for the city's interest in animal control. It's high time. I don't think we're going in the right direction. I'm delighted that Gail is taking your complaints, Alderman DeSantis. So I think it's time somebody does their job. And we're highlighting it. So what has happened in the last few months is we do have now this comparison study of alleged pure units of government. There's nothing pure about them. They are functionally, historically, foundationally different. The only thing that they share is that they're in central Illinois. They're very different from each other. Champaign doesn't adopt out animals. They're handed over to their humane society. Macon runs very differently. And Peoria has a very, very different history, particularly with their veterinary care. You do notice that they all seem to have more veterinary care than we do. We're only budgeting $63,000 a year for veterinary care. Illinois Humane has spent $26,000 in the last two years out of our money to augment this. $63,000 is not enough. I also, so I'm asking you to pay attention to what they're doing. All right? It is important. The other thing that surprised me about that comparison study is not, it was represented as they were going to compare the operations of these entities. And then, how do central Illinois peer counties use volunteers? And they spent quite a bit of time about use of volunteers and the fact that they're very concerned that Sangamon County's volunteers are vocal and advocating for change. They indicate in this study that the volunteers do not go to the director. That's wrong, inaccurate. They go to the director, nothing happens. They take it up to the next level. They take it up to the next level. They take it up, and that's what you do, try to get something done. But they do always take to the director first generally. Real quick though, the other thing that has happened is that evidently the employees have been required to sign a non-disclosure agreement. Why? And a non-disclosure agreement for the lawyers in the room, as you know, is a legal vehicle. It's a legal document meant to protect confidential information. I'm a lawyer myself. I was dumbfounded. The explanation was that we're trying to establish a chain of command. Well, if you had a manager who could establish a chain of command, maybe that would work a little better. But in that you don't, this is not the way to do it. It's a policy and procedure issue. When asked where the policy and procedures are time and time again, Mr. Rush finds that the employees do not know where they are. They don't have them in one form or manner. So again, you have a management problem. But I am very concerned about this non-disclosure agreement because it requires the employees not to talk to anyone but Greg Largent and Carol O'Neill. Now, if you, Alderman, want to know what's going on in animal control, you might want somebody to answer your question. And what about that public operation is confidential other than personnel files? Mr. Rush himself, I'm curious. I still don't know what he's been contracted to do. It was represented. He was supposed to do policy and procedures. In the most recent publication that we've had, all of a sudden, he's doing loss control because they might get sued. And then he publishes investigations regarding euthanasia questions. What is his professional competency? I will ask you that. What is his professional competency to be doing this kind of work at an animal shelter? I don't think he has any experience. Euthanasia is an incredibly difficult question in these shelters. You support your employees doing this. I know the employees involved. I know how hard that is for them, but you don't publicize these investigations. I don't, where is the union? Why are they not protecting these employees? They are providing the city an incredible service and they're not getting the protection they need. And I don't, as I said, I don't understand what Mr. Rush is doing. I understand he's giving orders over there. I understand he travels around with Mr. Largent like his personal attorney. I made a very, you know, heartfelt statement when they hired him. I'm incredibly disappointed in what has happened over there. I want to know what he's doing over there. I know he has upset the employees tremendously. So I do see my time is up. I am asking you to set up a task force of people who want to work on this and spend the time and learn this area of service. I have spent hours and hours and hours myself on this to try to keep up with it and help a little bit here. I do have a background in this, but it's time. It's time the city takes this up because we're not getting where we need to be with the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman Conley.
Thank you. And actually, Jane, could you stay up here for a second, please? I just want to clarify this real quickly. So you said that Sangamon County animal control employees are now required to sign an NDA?
They were required to sign it or lose their, take disciplinary action, yes.
And when did that happen?
That happened two weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago. It's a Friday. All of a sudden, we're getting this information on Friday.
Two weeks ago, the same employees who publicly signed a letter of concern about conditions at the shelter, they've now been told that they are not allowed to talk to anybody?
Correct.
Yeah, Mayor, we really need to look at this contract for next year. These are public funds.
What's our options, Mayor?
Well, we need to find another option then. And I think a task force, I know, but...
You have no option.
We do. Listen, I think if we're giving the county money, we can tell them that they can't tell their people they can't talk to constituents.
That's it.
But no, we're getting ready to put them on a board.
No.
What union is representing the workers?
Kristen, what union is it?
The laborers.
I just, I don't, I don't, the only thing that's been explained to me is maybe they're more, I mean, this is how ridiculous it's coming to you. We should be worried about the animal services, but why is the union doing this? Well, do they have a bigger unit they're interested in? So they're throwing this one under the bus? I don't know. I don't know how anyone could let these people sign an NDA and then let these investigation reports be issued to the public.
And I guess that's, Mayor, that's my concern. I mean, these are public dollars that we are, we're spending there. And I'm not saying, you know, Alderman Henner, I'm not saying remove the contract, but I, for one, don't want to know that taxpayer dollars that we're paying to another government official, that those employees now can't speak publicly on issues of concern. Obviously, there's a chain of command and I understand that, but when you start muzzling people who are in a job as sensitive as animal control, I think it's extraordinarily problematic. So thank you for bringing that up.
And they've, I mean, in the last year or so, they've gone through their chain. They've gone through their chain. And there are serious problems over there. And so all they're doing is they're going after the messengers here with this ridiculous comparison report where they've made, the characterizations are incredible and incredibly wrong in most instances. And it's just, they're going after the messengers. They're going after the poor employees who've been put up with so much after what they went through last year. They've only hired one or two or something. They're going to go through it again. And now they're coming down on the employees like this.
Yeah, that's, well, and one of the employees is facing retaliation for...
Oh, absolutely.
A complaint that she initiated.
Right. And that, those complaints, I've looked at that. I've got a little background in this. I do, you know, I have a, especially in shelter law, run a shelter myself. What she, the questions she raised were perfectly legitimate, okay? The policies and procedures aren't in place. And the question, those questions should have been handled in-house. And those employees should have been supported in what was going on there. All three of those matters concerned euthanasia. All of the national and the national sheltering organizations, animal control, they have a ton of training and support work and how you handle euthanasia. It is a most difficult thing in the world to handle, and this is not the way you do it. This is not the way you do it. And then to turn, and then to publicly, publicly question why she wanted the... And then to turn, and then to publicly, publicly question why she wanted the union steward there, and then publicly state that they were considering investigating her, I think is beyond the pale. It's absolutely beyond the pale.
Thank you for bringing these up.
You guys need to, please.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, I want to thank you for coming forward and, you know, sharing some of your information. I have some animal control, not so much dealing with the shelter. And I do have a scheduled meeting coming up on the 20th with Gail and Brian and several other. And I don't know if you joined yet or not, Alderman, but Conley, but if you have and can get there, I appreciate it. Because, you know, this came up early about should we be new, what can we do? And I'm seriously trying to work with them to get to the bottom of it. So I'm hearing that problem dealing mostly with employees in shelter. But trust me, if they're going through all that, I can now understand better why what's physically happening with the animals in the community. Now, it's given me a clear vision of maybe what's going on. And what I'm trying to do is talk with them, understand them, and ask them. And in this case, it deals with, you know, videos, pictures, you name it, and nothing being done. Absolutely, why call the animal control, I mean, they show up and nothing's done. And the people are angry, so I'm going to give it a chance. I'm going, this meeting is scheduled, I guess all of us can't be there, but it's on the 20th at four.
It's astounding that I've been complaining about this for five years, and no one, and Jane has seen, I'm on every single one of Jane's emails. And I have never, and I've requested to meet with them, and I have never gotten an invitation to meet with them. But they'll write press releases about me, entire press releases about me.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, Alderman, but I'll say this.
Just stating the facts.
I'm just going to try to learn from it and bring back to this council what I learned from this. And try to do this in a nice way without pointing the finger. But I do have some very angry constituents about some very dangerous dogs that they're scared of. And they have been living under these conditions for a while. So thank you for coming. This just gave me a little more aspect.
Alderman, we've been working on those field services for a long time, and if there's, you know, those, if they're dangerous vicious dogs or they're problem dogs that does fall under public safety and animal control, the humane investigators can only do so much, but please do scrutinize what you're being told, if you would.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Hakeem.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members, Alderwomen. I was in here probably about three, four weeks ago. And I ask you about Public Works going out and taking child toys out of my daughter's yard. What'd you find out? That's what I'm here tonight to find out.
Yeah, we can have Public Works give you a report on that.
No.
Okay. It'd be, that would be appreciated because that, come on. Just like Alderman Gregory said, what will go, not the basketball hoop, okay? If you take the kids' toys away from them, what are they going to do? They're going to go out, they're going to get in trouble. Okay, they're going to break windows, they're going to break into cars. Just something for them, something to do. But don't, don't take the kids' toys away from them. That's like punishing them. Oh, you can't have this. You see what I'm saying? Okay. Now, another question is, what, going over to the railroad issue. Which railroad is doing this project? Okay, is it Union Pacific? Is it Northern?
It's for North Fulton Southern and Union Pacific.
North Fulton Southern, okay. And who's the contractor?
Hanson Engineering.
We can get with Nate Bottom, and he can explain that.
Okay. All right, so after I get with Nate, then...
So I guess with regards to the items that were picked up, Daryl, because I see the pictures, you know, there's mattresses and other items. But with regards to the toys, are they in, were they tossed in possession or left there? I think that's what the bikes or the, looks like scooters or some port, do you know if those are still in our possession or where are those?
As you can see from the pictures, before and after pictures, we go out there and actually do a solid waste type pickup. What we do is basically take a picture before, before we take the picture after. But you see in those pictures is that the toys that you were talking about, our particular staff or collective, our brothers and stuff, were then asking, you know, did a fantastic job. What they did was they took the solid waste, I know it was truly solid waste, and disposed stuff promptly. As you can see, what's left behind are the toys. So the argument that the toys were taken is not accurate. As you clearly see, the pictures don't lie. Toys are there before and after.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Thanks, Director.
I would like to see those pictures.
Right there.
Alderman Gregory?
You know, Mr. Honor, we had a good conversation, and, you know, one of the things, and I'll just be honest with you. I ride, I live in that area, and I complain about that house. I didn't know it's your sister's house, but I complain about that house.
Other than my daughter's.
And the toys is fine, but some of the stuff that's in there, I've probably called them three, four times on that same house when I passed by because it's unacceptable, the way, in the condition that it's in. So, you know, all we ask for is neatness, tidiness, the best you can. We're not tripping about no toys and stuff, but mattresses, it looked like we probably forgot a pole with concrete on it that we used to hang some clothes, you guys used to hang some clothes on and stuff like that. You know, but the toys are still there. The toys are still left there. I live in the area. But, you know, the house itself can be a lot better, you know. People call me all the time in the area. I live in the area, I ride past all the time. So, you know, we got to do a little better, and, you know, we'll do what we can to be fair and to help you, but, you know, we got a job to do.
Right, I understand, you know, you have a job to do and everything. I'm not over there as much as I should be, you know, be with my kids.
I understand.
Because if I've actually seen how bad it was, I would get on them, say, hey, you got to clean this up.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
But I was just, you know, the city command took the kids' toys.
But they didn't.
They didn't. They left them. They left them, and they definitely left them.
Sean hasn't, oh, Sean.
They just cleaned up the mattresses and things like that. We actually left.
I didn't know about, nothing about no mattresses or anything like that.
Yep, yep. So sometimes we just got to get the whole story and stuff, and, you know, hey, I'm guilty of it too, and, you know, we move on, we'll keep working.
Now, is there a fine attached to this, that it will be taken care of?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. You have to ask.
Daryl, you can check with Daryl and Nate, they'd be able to talk to you about that.
Juan, show them the pictures, let them have the pictures.
Yeah, let them have the pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Vincent Cunningham.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. First and foremost, I would like to thank Mayor Langfelder and all of the aldermen and alderladies of the, for the opportunity to address the council all at once. Thank you very much. My name is Vinnie Cottingham. I am 100% disabled veteran that lives out in Auburn. While I'm no longer a resident of Springfield, my entire civilian life, most of my time and money, was spent right here in Springfield. Also, my wife currently works at one of the largest and oldest companies in this city. So I guess you'd say we have a vested interest in the city that I truly love. Just knowing the number of disabled veterans on the street makes me sick to my stomach. I have collaborated with the Vet Center and a group through the Salvation Army, dedicated to help unhomed veterans and at-risk veterans. While doing our boots-on-the-ground work, I was made even more of aware of a larger problem of the homelessness in our community that everyone notices and everyone agrees that something needs to be done. Granted, while there are differing opinions as to what to do about it, we do all agree something needs done. Five weeks ago, I started going out on my own, in addition to the groups that I work with, for several hours, giving out essentials and comfort items to the folks on the street that just need a little something. While I'm out there, I talk openly with everyone I make contact with. I ask them some of their challenges, what would make their day and nights a little bit easier in the situation they're in, and what are some of the most pressing needs that they have daily just for survival and safety. When I speak to the groups that I've been working with, they all say there are plenty of resources and services out there. But when I'm actually boots-on-the-ground for 10 hours a week, the people on the street either aren't aware of the services or they're so difficult to access, basic needs are not being met. It's quickly become painfully obvious that there is a huge disconnect between the resources and services in Springfield and the people who actually need them for the purpose they were created for. Now, I want to be that conduit connecting the two. I would like to create real partnerships to help. I know that between public funds, charitable organizations, churches, private donations, and outreach programs, there are many things available to help people in need. Most of the residents in Springfield are working-class people. And if the last 24 months has taught us anything, it's just about any of us are one illness or injury, missing a couple paychecks, and we're exactly where they are right now. We don't want to think about that, but if you think about it, it's true. Not too many of us are very far off from that if something life-changing happens to us. Yes, I admit, there are people out on the street by choice. But the vast majority are there by circumstances beyond their control. Unfortunately, my own daughter has experienced addiction and homelessness. Seeing what she went through and what these folks are enduring in our own community is driving me to make a real difference. Since five minutes is not nearly enough time to say everything I want to say, I've given you all a summarized list of the issues I've seen. I also have my contact information at the bottom of that last page. I am asking for each of you to personally contact me if you would like to come and hear a viable, equitable, and economic solution that I have come up with. I believe that with partnerships with existing resources, we can make a real difference for the entire city of Springfield and bring dignity and healing to our cities less fortunate. I'll be available after the meeting, in addition to any time that is convenient for each of you individually or together. I would very much like to get together over coffee or a breakfast, that's where I met the mayor not too long ago, over breakfast, to discuss this further. I am fired up about this, and I warn you, I won't give up on them. Hopefully, some of you will join me. So thank you again for your time, and I look forward to hearing from each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman, Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you for talking about this issue. I think we can do something better than talking with us. We now have, for the first time in the city's history, we have a full-time continuum of care staff person. His name is Josh Sabo. And they're in the process of putting together a comprehensive umbrella approach to these problems. Josh Sabo, Juan Huerta, would you raise your hand back there? I think you've got the contact information for Josh Sabo. And as you might know, Mr. Vince, for the first time in the city's history, we have a 12-month warming center available to those that need it. It's the first time in the city's history, so there's been some good things happening out there. And I think if you get some more information about that by meeting with Josh Sabo.
Sir.
Thank you.
Yep, the other thing is Juan can make the introduction. We do have a outreach specialist starting, working under his department, but working with the police department. And we've also funded a position with Memorial Behavioral Health, mental health specialist, to be part of the homeless outreach group. That's kind of what you've been doing. So we'd be more than happy to get you plugged into that whole process.
Sir, I would love to be able to facilitate with all these people, but with me out on the streets twice a week, the people who are in need either aren't aware of the services that, I mean, I know you, this is a topic that has come up many, many times over meetings. I'm not a Springfield city resident, but I pay attention to what goes on in Springfield. And it's a problem, and I know you guys hear about this problem a lot. But when the people who have the needs, those needs aren't being met, but everyone says there's plenty of resources, there's obviously a disconnect somewhere, and whether it's through the new liaison or any task force or whatever it is, there's a disconnect. I think, you know, you guys have heard the situation, you've come up with a lot of plans in place, but we're not seeing much change actually on the street. And yes, some of them, me being a veteran, and that's been my biggest challenge, is getting a veteran to admit they need help and actually seek the help. We're a proud bunch. So are they. Even the non-veterans, the civilians out there, they're hurting just as much. We really need to do something as a community, and I have a lot of great ideas that can be done with the resources that are currently out there and make real changes. So I hope to be able to make contact with several of you throughout the, throughout the city. Thank you.
And Juan can make those introductions. Alderman Conley.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. This is, I appreciate you very much, you coming here, and I'm not a vet. I don't have that particular experience and knowledge. You're bringing something to the table that I know is meaningful. I would strongly encourage you to talk to Juan and connect with Josh because we get stronger as we have more people engaged in this process as a whole, working together. You know, we're pulling towards the same, in the same direction. And like, I mean, you're saying it, yeah, you bring a voice and a background and an experience that might be something that, you know...
Fresh eyes, fresh ideas.
Yeah, fresh ideas, and you can talk to people in a different way. You know, a lot of, a lot of these, these concepts and these solutions, the whole philosophy behind it is you meet people where they are. And if you're able to meet people where they are in a way that's different than what's currently happening, then, you know, and you've got, you have some time to do this, please, please talk with the people who are also doing this and see if we can't, you know, they can't work with you and strengthen that connection. Because I don't doubt that there are people who don't know the services. But we do have them, and it's clearly going to take more meeting people where they are to make sure that they're getting those connections. And it might take meeting them there multiple times.
Absolutely.
To put it politely. So thank you for coming in. Thank you for your concern.
I am persistent.
I was trying to read through your list really quickly. I'm not that fast, but these are not new issues that you're bringing up. So thank you for coming, and please do, Juan works very closely with the continuum, and, but yeah, your compassion along with your experience is critical, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Eleanor Nailing, regarding a property purchase through the county.
I just want to, first of all, thank you all for listening to me. The issue I want to bring up is the fact of the city selling the properties around here that's needing roofing or some of them are demo lists, whatever. However, they're not being transparent as far as what's going to take to actually get these houses up and running. Of course, you can see the ones that say demo, so you're not going to get that. You're not going, you know, you're not going to choose a demo house to try to purchase to fix up. My issue is... My issue is, I purchased a house in April. And upon getting the house, again, going through the proper procedures or whatever, I didn't have access to the house for three months to even get inside. Once I got inside, I seen all the debris and everything else. From the outside, it just looked like, okay, it just need a roof. It just needs some siding, you know, to get it habitable. However, by setting up on going inside, I seen that it needed a whole lot of work inside. I started the inside work, put lots of money into it. As far as dumpsters, again, we were, like you said, the epidemic. There was holdup on dumpsters. You couldn't get dumpsters for months, two months at a time. Took me five times, five dumpsters to get filled, you know, get them filled up with all the debris that was on inside and on the outside before I could even think about doing any construction inside or out. My thing that I'm having the issue with now, because I've wrote to Mayor, I've spoke with the Alderman, is again, in October, like I said, after getting it all cleaned out, I had got flooring put down inside of the house. I'm ready to do the roofing. I've got all the material to do the roofing. They said I need to go and put in for an AOR, which I did. I did that in October 26th, as a matter of fact. I didn't get an answer until the 1st of November. And the answer that I got on the 1st of November is that, instead of them doing their due diligence to really find out, they just pulled up the surface stuff and said that there were fines that I needed to pay. What I was able to prove is that, no, these were not accurate. You know, I'm waiting on them to give me the go-ahead, to give me the permit that I needed so that I could start the roofing. I had paid out money to a contractor, you know, who came up with the agreement. I paid out the money for the contractor and everything. However, in November, November 10th, I suffered a stroke myself. I was in hospital myself for five days. Upon getting out from the hospital and going through all the males and stuff that I had, I came across the letter from Billion and Zoning stating that I needed to come and do an AOR, which means me signing that I could do this work within 90 days, pay the substantial fees to be able to enter into this agreement. At the time, I spoke with the legal counsel there. I explained to her, I just had a stroke myself. I couldn't even hardly talk. As y'all can tell now, I'm still stumbling over my words. I'm just now trying to get it back together myself. And I told her, again, it wasn't that I didn't have the $500, but to give $500 to the city and knowing that this is getting ready to be the heart of winter time, I didn't have anybody that could do that, the roofing and the siding and the soffia works that it needed. She took it as me saying that I didn't have the $500. No, that's not the case. I didn't have $500 to just give, nor was I going to sign committing to something that I knew I was going to be able to make. I asked her to give me until April herself.
Is this the property on Carpenter?
Yes, it is.
So, if you'd get with Juan Huerta, if he's still here. Hello, Juan, sir? Nope. If you can get with Nate Bottom and give him the address, we'll follow up on it with the Office of Economic Development, because I think you've had conversations with them, as well as Public Works, to see where it's at on the demo list.
See, that's what I'm saying. It wasn't on the demo list, and that's what's got me here. Because it wasn't bottom on the demo list. And my thing, it wasn't on the demo list until after I spoke with the legal counsel there and told her that, no, I didn't have the $500 to just give the city, nor did I want to come down and sign in the middle of November, the heart of winter, saying that I could get this work done over the wintertime when I knew that that wasn't going to be accurate.
Well, that's what we're trying to work out. So, if you get with Nate Bottom over there, and we'll pull the file and hook you up with the individuals that need to be part of the discussion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is James Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'm going to try to stick to script, but man, I hope you guys are praying. If you don't, start praying, because, man, y'all, your plates are full. And I said it last week, but let me start with this. Since I was here last week, one middle school shooting, one dead. White cops kills another black male. And then locally, one cop tells his true feelings. Set us back five years. I saw the support. I support the chief. I'm one who believes in... And you guys know who have been here. I heard you say you've been here six years, seven years, whatever. You've been here for a long time. I've been here before, y'all. I'll come up here and tell the good and the bad, always have. I've been up here, and I told the good about there's good officers. And I support them. But I told you a long time ago, for you ones that was here, the bad officers are the one we need to get rid of. And I still say that today. Thank the chief for the timely, swift movement, but there's more. Can't settle with that. Christine, you said it best, and thank you. I heard you. You didn't go with the flow, and she's right. If you think that that's the only one, you're wrong. Now, how do we get to the rest of them? And let's go a step farther. Let's not just talk about the police department. Let's talk about the whole city, all of the city jobs. We got to find a way to where we are supporting the people who speak up against that hatred. There's a lot of people that's not speaking up because they fear retaliation, and that includes the police department. So, I want y'all to do something and put something in place to support every minority that speaks up against that hatred. It starts with you, Mayor, and Circle. Start supporting the ones who are being harassed. And when they come and say something, that they don't have to be afraid of losing their jobs. That same energy that you put into saving employees from the power plant and keeping their jobs, I want that same energy to get rid of the ones who do stuff like that. That's all I'm asking. Support the blacks, the minorities, all of them. That same energy to keep and the same energy to get rid of. Now, when I signed up to speak, I was supposed to talk about diversity, so I got at least hit on that. In 2022, in Springfield, Illinois, our fire department has no black females. That is shameful. But we'll talk about building three new firehouses and spending all that money. And I'm with this man right here, McMenamin. We don't need no three. I can't even go to a school with a black female officer to show the little kids what they can be. And you know how many different fire chiefs I haven't seen since I've been coming up here? So, no, I don't support three new fire stations. Put some money in our community. Put some money to hiring some of our, some females. I'll train them personally for free. That's how much I care about it. Now, my whole goal was to come up here and piggyback on my school situation. There's 10 wards, and I'm going to go out on a limb, and I'm going to say everybody got a school in their ward, at least one. There's at least, don't quote me on all my numbers, there's at least three or four high schools in every, in this city. How many of y'all know them principals in your ward? There's at least four to six middle schools. How many of y'all been in there or even know the principal and know what's going on? Even ask, concern, in your wards? Tons of grade schools, can't even count. I don't even have a number of how many grade schools. And yet, I still need y'all to come to the grade school, my grade school, the one I'm trying to speak and help little kids. Because you know what I've learned just in the, this past however many days? Is that not only do we need to get into schools to help them, but to teach them about love and not hate. Because if they're not getting taught at home, then we got to teach them at school. And I told you last week, and I ain't going to take up too much time, but I got to say what I got to say, man. We got to support our principals, our teachers, and show these kids that we care. And I'll repeat it. And don't... If you ain't serious about kids, don't do it. I don't, we don't, they don't, they going to see right through you. It can't be about a photo op, or you want to post something on Facebook and all of that. You got to really genuine care about these kids. And that's what I want. And that's what I need this horseshoe to be about. But also, with this latest incident, I, the whole city needs the support. We all going to support the chief, but I'm going to tell you, it's going to be hard. It ain't easy. I heard what you said, Mayor. It ain't that easy, man. And I'm going to speak as a black man, and there's probably three people that really understand on this horseshoe how we really feel. You know, that's a setback. And no, I don't bounce, we don't bounce back that easily. Is there some fear in the neighborhood, in the community? Yeah. Should we be a little nervous? Yeah, we're human. Because I know personally, there are some ones on social media with some fictitious names spewing and saying the same thing. And until we can identify and eliminate and get rid of them, it's always going to be an issue. So, thank you for listening. See you next time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wish to address the council? If you'd come up and state your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Sunshine Clemmons. I won't give my address, but I will say that I live in Ward 5. Thank you all for giving me time tonight. I'm just going to read a letter that has already been submitted to the police department and to State's Attorney Dan Wright. The city council is CC'd for their awareness. I realize a lot of these asks are not something that you all have control over, but as this relates to a police matter, we want to make sure that you all are aware. This letter is addressed to State's Attorney Dan Wright and the Springfield Police Department. The undersigned organizations are outraged by the behavior of police officer, Springfield Police Officer Aaron Paul Nichols and his years of racism, hate speech, bigotry, and anti-Semitism shared on social media. As taxpayers and residents of Springfield, we all deserve better. The mission of the Springfield Police Department is to work in partnership with the community to promote open communication, education, cooperation, and fair and equal treatment to improve the quality of life, promote unity, encourage respect, and make Springfield a safe community. The actions taken by Officer Nichols do not demonstrate any of these principles and do nothing but continue to divide the police and the people that they serve. The co-signers of this letter are in disbelief that an officer with such strong beliefs rooted in hatred has been responsible for enforcing the law for 15 years. While we appreciate the swift action and the statement issued by Chief Ken Scarlett denouncing Officer Nichols' behavior and removing his police authority, we know that more can be done. First, we are calling for a review by the State's Attorney's Office of all police cases, reports, and any prosecutions that stemmed from the police work conducted by Officer Nichols during his tenure at the Springfield Police Department. These cases need to be reviewed to determine if there are any displays of bias or civil rights violations. Next, the Springfield community must be informed of the results of this investigation. Additionally, the Springfield Police Department must uproot and expose any information on any unofficial OTA call disposition in N. And if you saw the tweets, you know what I'm referring to, on any situations or scenarios. Finally, the police must identify and implement a plan to proactively identify employees with behaviors and beliefs similar to Nichols, because we know he was not the only one. Ultimately, we need to know that you, the State's Attorney, is, are just as appalled about this incident as we are, and we demand that the Springfield Police Department do better. You can do this by supporting the request in this letter. This letter is signed by Black Lives Matter Springfield, Springfield Call to Action, Sangamo Valley Sierra Club, Helping Hands of Springfield, Springfield Coalition on Dismantling Racism, Garvey Tubman Cultural Arts and Research Center, Macon County Democratic Party, Sangamo County Freedom Fund, the Illinois Women, Illinois League of Women Voters of the Springfield area, Central Illinois Worker and Tenant Resource Association, Springfield Immigrant Advocacy Network, Ward 5 Alderwoman Lakeisha Purchase, The Resister Sisterhood, Juneteenth, Inc., Douglas Avenue United Methodist Church, State Representative Sue Scherer, The Urban Action Network, University of Illinois at Springfield, First Church of the Brethren, Ward 6 Alderwoman Abraham Lincoln Universalist Unitarian Congregation, the Springfield Interfaith Association, Action Illinois, Faith Coalition for the Common Good, the Sangamo Valley Green Party, Grace Lutheran Springfield, as well as many individuals that are signed onto this letter. And this was what, this was the support that we received with a letter that went out at midnight last night. So, we know that there is much more support out there. So, we thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming in and making the statement that pretty much was reflected by the police department that came in. I mean, that's where we started the meeting. That's how we're ending the meeting. It's that hate is rejected, and, you know, it's an ongoing process. So, if any of you think that wherever you work, wherever you live, it goes beyond these walls. And so, when we started, I think it was Charleston incident that happened, we had the anti-hate resolution. That's what we denounced. And so, we appreciate everybody coming in, reflecting their beliefs that we all believe in around this horseshoe. Men and women that stood here before us, that started the meeting, believe it wholeheartedly. So, we'll continue to work towards that. And the one thing, I've read a lot of the comments. And the one comment that the officer had stated was that he did not want to divulge his identity because he knew he'd be fired. And that goes to show you the culture that Chief Kenny Winslow has built, as well as Chief Scarlett and all the men and women of the police department, that that is not tolerated. So, like I said, for, I think we were talking about garbage at the time. See something, say something. And going back to one of the speakers, it's just not at the time of an incident. We do this each and every day. We do this each and every day. Corporation Council, myself, every employee should believe the same thing, because if they don't, I said it back then, they should not be working or living in the city of Springfield. And I believe that to my core. And the reason I believe that to my core, I always go back to my roots, where my father was persecuted. They had to leave his country. And you look what's happening around us, around the world. It's happening again. So, everybody should wake up and stand up for respect, one another, equality for each other, and appreciate the freedom that the U.S. military provides us and the men and women of our police department. And so, we have to, it's important to support one another and move forward together. Because I'm not going to let anything divide us with regards to that. And I know we have, you know, highs and lows, things of that nature, but each and every day, we need to really, truly believe it and live it. And that's what it comes down to. So, I appreciate... So, I appreciate everybody coming in and expressing their opinion, but the work continues. I mean, we haven't given up on that work, it's each and every day. So, I don't know if there's anybody else that wish to address the council? You'd come forward and state your name and address of the ward you're in, we'd appreciate it.
My name's Nick Dodson. I'm in Ward 8. I won't be divulging my address, most of you know me. Most of what I was going to say has been addressed, I will say that. And I do want to say I do appreciate the swift manner and with the chief dealt with things, however, I want to get that horseshoe to commit to a investigation and pushing for one on 20 years of work. I know that that was lightly talked about, and we did all thank him and congratulate him, which was appreciated. I think we need to take it to a step further, and I need to think we need to say, hey, you've had 20 years of work in our city, in our community, someone needs to audit these very closely. So, yes, we're all moving forward, however, the cancer needs to be dug out.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Is there a motion for dismissal?
Second.
Moving second? Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the name. We're adjourned, thank you.